City Council. Everyone have a chance to look at the previous minutes of our meeting last month. Any corrections or additions to that? If not, we'll take a motion to approve them. So move Lawrence second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then tonight's agenda, we have an addition of spring cleanup. And the property we were just talking about down there. Anything else to add to the agenda? If not, we'll take a motion to approve. Tonight's agenda is read.
I approve.
Joe, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We've got no visitors tonight. We'll move right on to Bill.
As far as spring cleanup, we'll talk about it now. I'm planning on May fifteenth through the eighteenth, I think it is. We're doing, you know, the fifteenth through the eighteenth. Being we don't do it the nineteenth is because we don't want to talk to people setting stuff out. Friday at four o'clock and still never going around picking stuff up, you know, we want. So we want all day Friday to get stuff cleaned up for the weekend. As far as the dump goes, the dump was fairly dry. We drove out there today. There was a lot of snow around the pit yet. Pit around is still pretty wet. So I wouldn't recommend driving in there yet. So we're gonna kind of shoot for that week for the dump to be open too.
Okay.
You wanna, you wanna mention that what? That Tim wants to change or change dates?
We're gonna change date from Wednesday to a Tuesday because Tim works. Wednesdays he has Tuesdays off. The time's gonna stay the same. It's just gonna be.
Oh, you're talking to dump open?
Yeah.
To Tuesdays instead of Wednesdays?
Right.
Okay.
Tuesdays and Saturdays. Tuesdays and Saturdays. Same date, same time hours.
You made some agreement there?
Yep.
You troubled it? I don't think so. Let's get it out then.
Get a permit and put them out. And then what we're gonna do is the branch pile's gonna go in the pit along with the clean wood. So we just have to burn one instead of burning on top of that hill. And then we're gonna put the mulch pile up there. And then what Lauren and I and Dennis did last fall, we still got room in that southwest corner of the dump where sheet rock and stuff like that to be buried. We don't want no sheet rock piled there anymore. All it has to be buried.
But they still can take sheet rock out there?
Right.
Correct. Okay.
Yep. That's an issue there. Otherwise, it's gonna stay the same. Still concrete shingles. Stuff like that. Just moving the branch pile down into the pit. So we don't have to burn on top of that hill. Everything being inside that pit.
Branch piles, that leaves and everything?
No, leaves will be in the mulch pile.
Okay.
I think that's about it as far as in the dump. I made an appointment with Corey Shores to get the German Shepherd DOT inspected. And we had an issue with the right tag on that. For some reason, the brakes are locked up on it. But Lauren and I and I'll crawl underneath it one day and messing around with it, we were able to get it loose. And then I took a James Allen, brought it back, and that brake was all tight again. I don't know if there was something wrong with that adjusting under there, I suppose maybe. Or if the spring broke somewhere in there.
I assume that's not the automatic adjuster thing in the whole thing?
And it rattles when you had it loose and you hear something rattling in there. I don't know, with rocks or... So I don't know, something, something, I'm afraid something's wrong internally.
But if you're trying to look at it anyway. The other side, he did that two years ago. He did the other side. So it's good. Pottles in town, we've been filling them. We got, I think we're pretty much done as far as pottles. Still got like fourteen or fifteen bags of that stuff left, so.
Are they doing forty-six or fifty-six?
I haven't heard. A guy was gonna get back to me and he didn't make it.
Are you going to put that down in the intersections, the fifty-six and the?
Yeah. I mean, did the bigger pottles, you know, in the stretch too. As far as tarring, I called the guy to order tar. We're just gonna order three barrels. And go from there. He said, don't order it yet because it still gets kind of cold at night. That cold makes. He said, wait till it gets, you know, stays above forty at night for a while.
Okay.
July. Hopefully sooner than that.
It's not looking good, is it?
So I talked to the church, I guess, the Lutheran church. They want to do their parking lot. We did that, what, three or four years ago? And I told them it would probably be just paying for the barrel.
Okay.
Other than that, they, they got anything else?
Sounds good.
Was more contacted on the lead plate?
Yeah.
Yeah, they assigned.
That was mailed to him already.
Good. Anything else for Bill, you guys?
No.
Auditor?
I don't have anything until we get to the bills. I don't want to explain one thing down there.
Okay. Joe, you got anything for water sewer policing?
Oh. I was driving around town and all that, all the snow's gone and stuff in it. I was looking at license plates. And a lot of vehicles around town that are in yards and such. The color for this year is blue. I've seen reds. I've seen yellow tags on vehicles. I, I was hoping Kyle would be here tonight so I could talk to him.
He's gonna be a little late. He said he's.
Is he? I don't know if we're going to, now, what we set forth this last year about snows being removed in the streets and all that stuff, was that just snow removal during the year or was that year round?
It should be year round.
That's what I was thinking because we were talking to that individual who we had him remove stuff from his backyard and stuff if they weren't tagged correct. Okay, so I've seen vehicles on sidewalks parked in yards. I've seen vehicles with yellow tags. Now, that's gotta be two years because they reds last year. Not sure. But red and yellow, I know blue's issue, so red and yellow is out of date. I think Kyle's gotta go through town and police the city on that. I don't know. And there's cars parked, Kirk Fisher has a white, two white Rams that are once parked on the sidewalk in a yard. It's backed up in the yard that's on the sidewalk. If there was a sidewalk, I don't know if there's a sidewalk there, but it, it just. If we're gonna be, you know, doing this to these people, it should be citywide. And so I was gonna talk to Kyle about that. If you guys, you know, want Kyle to go through the city and kind of, you know, kind of maybe even do just a survey on how many are and how many aren't, and then come back to us and report. Instead of go forth and put up vines and stuff like that, just to see exactly how prevalent it is or rampant it is or if it's even necessary to bother with, you know what I'm saying? I don't know how you guys feel about that, but it, it is. Especially in this in the town, it is a lot of vehicles that are parked, just parked and have been moved for. And it looks trashy enough. The snow's gone.
And a bit in the bug. We don't have to address it just every fall, I guess.
Yes, yes, exactly. And I didn't know if it was just for summer or winter snow removal time and then we're done or if it was year round.
The ordinance says if it's not tagged properly or it's not running, it's supposed to either be in a building or not out there. It's not supposed to be out there. It's gotta be stored in a building if it's not, if it's wrote down or not tagged.
So. My suggestion is to have Kyle go through town and just kind of maybe write down what's going on and what's yellow and red and how many there are and come back to us.
I would agree.
And we act on it then, one way or the other. Instead of just all of a sudden, yeah, go ahead, throw him in jail. Yellow. Not extreme. I would say let's do a survey first. And Kyle would be the one to know what's yellow and what's red and what's good and what's bad and, you know, the old line yard.
Yep.
Take a little bit of his time, maybe a half hour, hour, two hours to go together and do that. So. I don't know, you guys feel?
I agree. Kyle could do it and he's policing the town anyway. When he's cruising the town, he can just document where he runs into. Because the one thing is some of those, last year was red, right?
Okay.
And some expire in the middle of the year and.
Yes, yes, that's another thing. That's another thing. Yellows completely, I mean, there were three yellows, that's all. They're completely.
Yeah, they're definitely too old.
Yeah. So, and then, I don't know, we can go from there. What we want to do, whether contact them, sit, write them up, whatever, just contact them for whatever we want to do after that, go forth and decide.
Okay.
I agree. You guys want to deal with that.
Anything else on that, guys? Question?
He's gonna be here later. We'll talk to him and see what he thinks on that.
Bring it up to him.
That's all I got, man.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. Jeff, you got anything?
No.
Larry? Lauren?
Can I ask what the date was on that park cleanup again? Do you remember?
For the city cleanup?
Yeah, city park cleanup.
May fifteenth through the eighteenth.
Oh, no, the park cleanup. There was something on Facebook about everybody bringing their tools and rigs.
Is this the fifth?
May fifth, I think, isn't it? It's this weekend.
Seven.
Seven, Sunday.
Oh, yeah, you got a park number there.
May seventh?
Yep. Okay, okay.
May seventh at, at two.
At two o'clock?
Yep.
That was on Facebook and I forgot and I couldn't.
I thought I saw that as well.
Anything else, guys? We'll move to old business. Approved application for lead service. That's done. You guys said you sent it on time to them. We're gonna go there.
Yeah, that's on my side today.
That water lead service.
Oh.
Yeah, they sent it.
State funded snow removal assistance.
Well, I, um, I helped Sherry with it. And I took it up to school. They emailed it, but they definitely wanted it emailed. And it was due on the thirtieth. We sent it up on April twenty-eighth.
Okay.
And if my numbers are any way close to the way they accept them, we probably qualify for about eight thousand dollars. A little short of eight thousand.
Okay.
Kind of the ironic part of it is that, in my opinion, that program was kind of backwards, written backwards. Because the, they go from October through December. That was the early season. They allocated fifteen million. And then they allocated five million for the.
Rest.
Entire season. Well, really, if you look at it, our problems didn't start till after the new year.
December was nice, exactly.
Yeah. We had thirty-five and a half, no, 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 no. Yeah, thirty-five and a half inches of snow in December. And where I got those documents from was the Central Grasslands.
We had eighty inches total, didn't we? And now they figured Logan County had, do you remember?
Up to April sixth, we had a hundred and two.
Eighty.
And then in nineteen, the season of nineteen, twenty, we had eighty and then in eighteen and nineteen, we had ninety-eight, five.
You got them figured. Good. And the annual rainfall for Lamar County, annual snowfall for Lamar County is forty-one inches. To figure the annual average snowfall for Lamar County, Logan County. Now, since we're up in the corner, it wouldn't hurt to get Stutzman's and Lamar's also annual snowfall.
See what I used? I called the weather service in Bismarck because I had no idea what days. And then they referred me back to Central Grasslands, which is the official recorder for this area. And this is what they're, a sheet for every month. And the way they break down, like this is January seventeen. You know, there's the date and then the snowfall. That's how they went, that's how I went through the list. And I think I'm gonna use the same when I do the, the season.
You're a good man. Now, we need for, four years before that.
Right, that's in here.
That's in there?
It starts, she started, the only one I'm missing is April of twenty-three. Like here's twenty-three March. We had thirty-one and a half. And then April through the sixth. Uh, we had twenty-two. And I was gonna call Sandy back if she could print me one for the entire April. Because I suppose she's printed this on the thirteenth. So that's all the numbers she had to work with.
And as far as the numerical value for the past four years? I guess, what are you, what are you thinking about coming up there?
I called up and I talked to three different guys, got three different answers. What the hell do you use for values, you know? And one guy said, well, use the FEMA rates, which is this uncle here.
Okay.
The problem is it's all based on twenty-two. And then I said, well, seventeen was a lot different rate structure. And he says, well, I'd recommend you use all of twenty-two. He says, not gonna be in your favor, but do it that way. Well, then, the last guy I talked to said, well, we might make an adjustment on your numbers for that. So I just, because he said I could also use our own rates. But he says, you're gonna have to prove them. And how in the hell am I gonna prove rates for the payholder from back in seventeen? And then fuel consumption, you get all that crap involved. I can't do that. I mean, I didn't know how to go about doing it. I don't know how much time I would spend on it. And at that point, I didn't know whether to qualify. But I was a little shocked when it got down to the end. Because this is kind of how, I hope you guys can't see it, but in other words, on the five-year history, I took out the highest year, averaged the remaining four, and it comes up to about fifty-three hundred dollars a year average. Then, what they say, they'll pay a hundred and fifty percent, or you take that times a hundred and fifty percent. So that average or average was seventy-nine hundred. In October through December of twenty-two, we had twenty-one thousand eighty-one. Minus the seventy-nine fifty-four. So we were eligible for thirteen thousand one twenty-six. They're gonna pay sixty percent of this overage. So that's where I come up with seventy-eight seventy-six. So I'm, I'm gonna actually keep these folders out to the shop for the time being in case they call back. And, you know. So I got something to go on.
You already submitted these figures?
Those, that's all submitted.
And they said it sounded pretty good?
I haven't heard back from them.
Hell of a jungle, huh?
So I'm gonna start working for the season totals. You know, because I got the dates of the snowfall and, and I think I'm gonna do it identical, just use the FEMA rate. And just keep going. Because I think it'd be a lot less trying to prove numbers.
Well, thanks for doing that.
Okay. I'm gonna dig it.
All right, anything else on that, guys? Wait to hear back. All right, permit for Marlene Hells. Randy Miller was approved. House for David to buy.
Oh. On that one, what are we asking for that house? I kind of stole from calling him.
Yeah, he's been calling me nonstop.
Yeah.
And texting. And I told him, you're a very busy man. And I told him, I have a meeting tonight, but if you all are showing this is different. I didn't look under Andrew. See this book? Are you sure that's right, you guys? Because this book would put Andrew Hefflin right here. And of course Steve Mueller's right next door, Kelsey Molenhauser, Gaffel Premier Properties. How is this not Andrew's property? Wouldn't it be four, one, five, oh, for the Gaffel City property? Because Andrew's is much smaller. And when we first looked at it the first time, we went under that five oh and was eleven thousand dollars for that property. Where Drew's is only at six thousand fifteen, this property is bigger. Actually, you gotta make sure because that's a big difference. The way I read this, it is showing that property, then Andrew, Steve Mueller, Kelsey Molenhauser, and they all go bump, bump, bump right in a row. Mm-hmm. So I think you're not right on them. I mean, I'm, I don't know, for fact. But for these figures, we want to know because if we go up to the Gaffel City one, it shows that eleven thousand dollars was the street assessment. If we go by that number you gave me, it only shows six thousand fifteen hundred. Six thousand five hundred fifteen.
Five oh four two thousand.
Because in this book, it shows me all the way through, it's Andrew and Lundy. And it's.
Yeah, it's in.
Okay, Joe, what's Andrew's number?
Same thing, five oh four two thousand.
The same thing?
Yeah.
So, so in this book, they've got Gaffel City as five oh four, one oh five oh, and Drew is five oh four two thousand. So in this book, to figure out our figures, we need to be going by this one. Which would be eleven thousand dollars. So we've already made two seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-one cent payments for the last two years. And that will leave a bottom figure of still owed would be, am I in twenty-three? Yeah, ten thousand five hundred and forty-eighty-eight. So he would, we definitely need to be reimbursed what we paid out.
I would say Andrew Hefflin has paid.
He's got.
Andrew's is smaller.
No, we're. Because I don't have as much frontal.
No, you know, where this one does.
I do believe, I do believe, okay, I do believe the last time we, I do believe the last time we met, you had mentioned you'd like to see some plans of what he's gonna do there.
Yeah.
Because you don't want a junkyard. You know what I'm saying? That, I do believe that was mentioned. You said, I'd like to see some kind of plans, what he's gonna do there. Build a house, put up a shop. Is it gonna be a whole bunch of machinery parked there? Does he know the land is slanted like that? What kind of drainage? I think that was.
Because that's, that's the thing that bothered me. When I visited with him, he, he says he's a contractor. And he made a comment about he's poured cement that would go from Florida, I think, to Alaska. Okay, fine, Danny, but then he was.
That happened in my ear.
He was cutting down the local contractors that gave him estimates. What really frosted me, and he asked about electrical, and I said, well, we'd probably be interested. I don't want to get into a big project. I said, but I need a set of plans to give you an estimate. Well, he sent me a, a text message, four lines on a piece of paper. What the hell does that tell me? You know, as a contractor, wouldn't, you know, when I looked at that, I thought to myself, well, as a contractor, he would know you need some details. What kind of building? Is it stud? Steel metal or steel? I got no clue. I don't know what the hell to use for a wearing method. So I think we should come up with a price of what we'd want for that product or that parcel. And then I gotta get on the ball and call him back. And I personally, I think he's going off of what he sees in, uh, uh, Google map.
That's what he's going on, yeah.
So he doesn't know what that.
Got to be a ten-foot drop from one side of the alley to the far side, isn't there, Andrew? That's slanting, good. I drive by there quite a bit.
And he's, you know, there's trees, depending on how he's situating that building. Because it's a shelter, I guess. Well, now he's got trees in the way. You know? And that Google map that I seen, it could be awful deceiving.
And as far as his construction goes, that's his problem. How many trees you gotta take out, da, 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 da. But still, I didn't know it was gonna be a show. It's gonna be a house and home or a shop and home, okay? Therefore, it's not gonna be that junky. Because there could be some shops that are.
I don't see it being junky. I can't see a guy from out of town just wanting to buy a parcel of all his shit and put it on an area.
But being a home, it's not gonna be. But if it's just a shop, there could be a lot of dead vehicles around it, a lot of partial vehicles, parked vehicles with engines out of it. Da, 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 da. I don't know. A lot of trailers? I don't know. But being at a home.
My personal opinion is the city owns it right now and get rid of the damn thing. That's my personal opinion. I understand your concern. I, I, I understand your concern. I can't even imagine.
But before we jump in and.
It's not gonna be as worse as that. I mean, I'm, you know where I'm going to. I, I understand where you're going. You understand where I'm going.
Yes.
It actually can be worse than it is. There can be that side of it also. I don't think it's gonna be. Don't get me wrong, Jeff. But I agree, let's get rid of it. But let's not hand it over to him like we thought right out of the bat. Twenty-five hundred bucks, you know, no. We're into it like Sherry said, for how much. We definitely got to do that.
Yeah, we have fifteen hundred about in specials, right? Fifteen thirty-two?
Mm-hmm.
If you go and tell the guy eleven thousand dollars for a piece of property and he says, oh, never mind, then where are we at?
He knows it's gonna be about that. Because he, he.
If he's willing to pay it, then that's.
He would assume all the specials. And he, and he would have to pay any specials we've already paid on it. So the city can be reimbursed.
He's, he's aware of what numbers.
About what it is. I said, it's about somewhere twelve, thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars is what. You're gonna end up paying after you do all the specials.
Okay.
Well, I said, that's just a ballpark figure when we talk.
Well, we could go two thousand, twenty-five hundred. You know, we still get our specials covered.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
And that's actually plus. Instead of the city paying them, he's paying them, we're not. So you're kind of.
Well, that's what I'm.
You're kind of doubling.
That's what I'm trying to say. You know, you, you, you know, don't, don't overshoot this too far, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Well, definitely need to get the guy.
Well, he wants to. He called me twice today.
So we probably ought to come up with a number.
Well, what do you guys want to do? Two thousand, twenty-five hundred? Then plus he takes over the assessments?
Yep.
I'd say that's fair. Two thousand and five, take over assessments. Let's get a payment out of him.
A motion? Twenty-five hundred and then plus he takes over assessments and that gives us what we paid in back assessments then?
Yep.
Larry, second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And he's talking, the first time I talked, or when I did talk to him, he was gonna come, I think, mid-June. And I personally, I think what we should do is if he's interested at twenty-five hundred, we'll hold it for him. We're not gonna sell it to somebody else in the meantime.
That's fair.
But we want him to see it before we sign any paperwork.
I, that's, I would think that.
Only fair to him and I. Only fair to him and I.
Yep.
And it's, then we can talk to him a little bit about his plans and stuff too.
Tell him the deal.
So, are you hoping to call him after meeting him and tell him that?
I'll call him. I'll make a point to call him. But I'll just probably send him a text first.
You're not getting the money, are you? You're owning the property, you know?
I think I should. I may need to throw a little bit on this.
Gonna raise that price.
That's what the city wants, it's in my name.
And you know, maybe I should wait in the morning and just call Logan Colony to find out what that parcel number to me. Damn sure that that's right.
I'm just going by this book here, and that, it shows-
Not a bad idea.
It shows that one as being, um-
The property just south of, or west of J. Reeves. That's the one we're talking about.
Or west, you mean?
West of J.
Or is that what you said, I'm sorry?
That's what it is. I did say south, but-
So the one we're going by with figures is 504,150. And it's listed for Gackel City.
What was that?
505,04, 1,050. And it's listed under Gackel City.
They probably did change it, this is probably hasn't been changed. That could be, yeah.
They deserve our data, I own by these ones, I do myself.
Where's 1050 on that?
1050?
1050.
504, 1050.
1020? Well.
It's only been about 10 of those maps made, so it's just not up to date.
Yeah, probably the first one we did, too.
I know last time we were looking at this one, you said it was 1050, and I looked it up, and I-
I got one more thing. Joe Davis, where across the school.
I was gonna bring that up, yeah.
We'll get it after.
Just to see what's going on.
No, we have water break. There's a half-inch line going from the stairs upstairs, and it was blown wide open.
These are different numbers.
Maybe 10,000 today?
No, they're not, no, they're not. Up here, it's got 504, 1050.
I swear, it's the number I had in this book right here.
This is what it is here too, that lot. It's 140 feet assessed.
Yeah, see Drew's number is right. This, that is 1,050.
Yeah. This is the right one.
So that was the 1050 that-
Yeah. 505, 04, 1050.
If you wanna bring that up, Bill's, it's somewhere Joe Davis's house.
Joe Davis, California, across the school. They, he had a water break. Cherry or Vidia found it. Just by their water usage on their meter, it was a lot. And I had, I could call Joe, tell him to break into the house and get it shut off. Said couldn't get it shut off, that's pretty bad.
Is that the gentleman from California?
Yeah. He owns the old building. So he broke the lock. Was able to get in, shut the main off into the house. From what I could tell, furnace went out, whatever. It was actually just a fitting that actually came apart. You know, solder fitting that pulled apart. And then took some pictures upstairs. A lot of the plaster and the ceiling was coming down. I mean, when I walked into that house, it smelled like a pool. It was just so much chlorine. Ceiling fan was coming down. So we turned on a little heater. I was screwed to the floor, Joyce. I turned the heater, threw the brake around for that heater, and that heater just started smoking. I shut that heater off quick, and I told him, "That's not gonna work." I told him, "We have to get somebody to hang it, get that furnace going." I know it was a lot of money for that-
Wait, he, he, he's made a phone call here, like a message that, um, cause he got the bill. The bill is 3,000, almost, almost, almost $4,000, 3,000 something dollars for his water bill. And he left a message saying that's a lot of money. He's got about $20,000 damage inside the house. He doesn't know what he's gonna do. But I'm sure that's why he has home insurance, right? The water break, so they pay for the water break. You think? I don't know, so I didn't bring it up because that water went through his meter, or therefore it's gotta be paid for. Correct?
He was probably lucky that his floor drain was working fairly decent. Cause there's only about 6, 8 inches of water in the floor. Otherwise, that would've gone into the furnace and everything else, it would've been a-
See, nobody goes up there, so you don't notice.
Let's do that.
He didn't have anybody watching the house.
And if I didn't live in town, I would have somebody watching.
Well, when I called him, he said he might have a key in Jamestown. And I told him the city won't drive to Jamestown for a key. You have to have that one here in town.
Well, if he would've just turned his Volvo off, I'm sure he's got heat tape around the main, come in. And I would've plugged in and looking.
Well, see how this one plays out, I guess, it's not our fault, it's kinda like-
Yep.
Okay. Other new business, snow removal for business, is that-
Did we, yeah, Bill and I had a question. Did we decide before, we couldn't remember how we did it, when we said Troy was gonna do the sidewalks? And then were we supposed to divide, give each person a bill, or was the city paying that bill?
On Main Street, you're talking?
Yeah, on Main Street. Just up here, up front.
Does he keep track of those hours?
Yes, he, he billed it separately, sidewalk and other. Sidewalks are always separately. But like you have the bank, they pay their own bill to Troy. And we weren't sure what you guys, if you guys decided the city would just pay it? Or do, we paid Troy, and then we had to bill out the businesses?
I know from earlier discussion, that was what we had kinda decided. Cause we had so much trouble with, like even community development. What we own along there. We'd hire people to clean, and they wouldn't do it. So we finally decided to have Troy as a council. And I don't know how many you guys were on, but we said we're gonna have Troy do all of the sidewalks. And then we're gonna divide it by frontage foot. And send the people a bill.
Well, that's probably what we should do.
And I really think we should. Good example is, is Joe Davis with the hardware store. He had nobody cleaning that, so here you had the width of the hardware store, pile of snow. And then the senior center, they were paying the Remble Brothers to clean that little bit. And David Vayness has a few feet. He wasn't cleaning with a dam.
I don't think John Miller's cleaning. Yeah, there's a lot of them that, she just get a bill.
Well, we weren't sure so before. Um, I know I did talk to Nicole. And if I give her that bill for the sidewalks, she will give us funding out of that bar, pull tabs to pay the bill. But she thought the city had to pay that bill.
For her to have a clean front step?
No, she didn't decide that that way. I asked her, was there funds there? Cause you can go get funds for there for different things.
I understand that, but she wasn't gonna pay it?
Oh, no, she said she would. But she said she thought that the city chose to start paying all them. But I, Bill and I talked about it, we didn't think that was-
I remember us talking about that, and that's, that's what we should do, in my opinion.
I went on to board, and that's only-
And I mean, if Joe Davis doesn't- If he doesn't pay it, then we put it on the taxes.
That's only illogical.
Break it down in the frontage and-
Yeah, yes.
So if I bring, we give you the bill, who's gonna figure that out?
Oh, we got the frontage right on these maps here.
Oh, there you go.
Take two seconds.
Yep.
Alright, so I'll get the sidewalk bills out, but first, I'm gonna see, she said we could put in for funding for that.
And we'll exclude the post office.
Yeah, cause I'm down this one.
I think he doesn't include that. He bills the post office. We can check with Troy too.
And the bank, right?
And like the bank.
They pay the, yeah.
The bank pays Troy directly.
Right. And the post office does. Yeah.
I think he'd do the post office, don't you? Or are you used to it?
Used to.
Has he done sending in all his bills for snow removal?
I think we got it on the line, yeah.
Before we move on to bills, uh, did you wanna discuss with Kyle what we talked about earlier before you got here?
Uh, yeah. We were talking about policing, and we were wondering if you could get a new policeman. No. We were, since we implemented the policy on cars being updated, and if they weren't in a building, if they weren't licensed correctly, and da-da-da-da-da. That whole thing there. I drove around town, and there's some yellow tabs, there's some red tabs, there's, you know, a variety of them around town.
Yellow tabs would be your currents for this year being renewed already.
Oh, is yellow the new color?
Red would be-
What's blue?
Blues are current for this year. Yellow will expire in 2024.
Oh, yellows are the new ones-
That you'd get from-
From January, February, March, okay. Um, red is what?
Expired.
Red's about, I've seen some red ones. Anyway, we had kinda, I brought it up to the board, and it kinda said something to the effect of we would like for you, if you drive through town, maybe to just take a survey of what is and what isn't up to date? And then bring it back to us, and as a council, we'd decide how to go forth on it?
So we don't really do that. We can either enforce it and have them towed for violating the ordinance, or I can write tickets. I can enforce the ordinance or not. It's kinda how you guys wanna do it. If you guys want a survey, that's more of a thing for you guys.
What do you mean, survey, drive around town, write down the license numbers?
Right, that's-
You can't do that?
That's not really what we do, we either-
Wait, wait, I guess, um, if the city of Gackel asks the police force-
Right, so I-
To do something like that, you refuse it. I guess it comes down to that, I don't know.
Not necessarily. Like I said, there's, we can take enforcement action. If, if you want us to enforce it, we can 100%. But for a survey, that's not really, we don't-
I guess survey is the wrong word.
And you're talking, these are more on the sidewalk or parked in there?
They're everywhere in town, seriously. I saw more red than I did yellow. Yellow's the new ones, no wonder I didn't say that, man. I just don't understand Kyle, where you're coming from. Survey is a bad word, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I mean, you know, if you don't, if you guys don't like mine, so you can definitely ask Andrew. Maybe he'll say we will do it. But we're more the enforcement side than the survey side. So if you want them towed or enforcement taken, 100% we can do that.
You would have to waste time, not waste time, but use time writing the license numbers down, writing out the tickets, and doing that. And all we're saying is for you to write down the license numbers of the ones that have red and stone, bring it back to us.
I understand where Kyle comes from on that aspect. I mean, there's not much we can do legally as a council. We could tell Warren or Kyle to give him a ticket, but for him to come back, I can kinda see both sides of that.
I mean, is, is it the purpose that you guys wanna send out a letter and be like, "Hey, register your vehicles"? I, I don't, I don't know what that angle is here. I don't, I don't know what the purpose of me going around and writing down license plates would be if we're not gonna do anything about it.
Good point.
Yeah, I see the point.
Good point. Now then, it's up to us to just say, "Go ahead and license them", I mean, if it or not.
Like we, I towed a car off Second Avenue East, yes, two days ago, three days ago. That, that plates or anything, ended up being a Shanika Cradocks.
Okay.
So I mean, if you have vehicles in mind that you want me to take a look at, 100% will let me know, and I can go look at them, see if they're in compliance or not.
This'll run or don't.
Well, some people are scared when they, uh, register their vehicles in the winter time. They won't put their stickers on, cause they don't think the stickers will stick, cause it's cold.
I understand, they, they should be stuck on warm, I-
You know, so I, I mean, that's a fear that people have, and sometimes they forget, and they just have to-
That's why we kinda wanted to send a letter out first, saying the next month, we're gonna start implementing or start enforcing this in town.
Well, and that's, if Cherry could put a little note on the water bill, and be like, "Hey, get your whatever I'm gonna get here", you know, that's enough for a warning.
I think the last time we've done, I don't know. I don't know. And I wrote them all down, and gave it to him, and we went and found, one of them decided we're gonna get tickets. He took my list and went around and found one.
So what he's saying is we make the list, and then we decide if we wanna do something about it? Right? That's, same as we did last time then?
Right.
That's what we did before.
Cause if I'm gonna spend the time to write the plate, I'm gonna scare our ticket. It just, there's two birds, one stone versus throwing a lot of rocks and not getting anything done?
No, no, I don't see it that way. But, you do. Um, yeah, I- What do you guys think?
Let's do this, let's just a couple of us go around.
And do that.
And we'll just document how many there are. And we can decide from there.
Okay. We'll get old Andrew, Kyle, and they go ahead and not go ahead, or, okay. Sounds good.
Last time what we did was once you found them, and you decided, we sent them the ordinance that they were not in compliance. And they had so many days to get in compliance, or then they'd be ticketed. After that, you get towed. But we did give people the warning.
So, let me ask it this way, then too. Uh, the ordinance part of it, that's if it's in their driveway or their yard. But as, as far as on the street, that is-
Well, so, yeah, we still has their ordinance, I believe, where it has to be licensed and registered with insurance to be parked on the street.
So that would be above and beyond what we would say, right? That's state law or state?
That's part of your guys' ordinance.
Even if they're on the street?
On, on the street, they, they have to be. That's part of your guys' ordinance. Uh, when they're in their yard or in their driveway, it's a lot more riskier. It's more like a John Berit type deal, where there's like 30 cars in his yard. Kinda how we were pushing for the junk ordinance, with the markings and stuff. That's more when you get into that.
There is that ordinance that if it is not running, not registered, and it's not in a covered building, then it can't be there.
Okay, I just wanted to know for like on the street, actually.
Yeah, on the street, your guys' ordinance still says that-
That's still our, that's-
License and registration, and then other part of it, it has to move every 72 hours.
Sure, yeah.
And then he was saying a couple were over the sidewalk. Our ordinance does say you cannot be parked over the sidewalk.
Yep. Yeah.
We'll look at that, too.
But if you would happen to catch them moving it every 72 hours, then you're good? If their registration isn't up to date?
Well, if the registration is not up to date, they're still being violation.
Catch it, that's what I want to know.
And it's how big you guys want to be. You know, if you want me to be Robocop and, you know, do that, I 100% will. It's just how you guys want to enforce it.
I think we should just see what, how big the problem actually is first, and then address it next month?
Well, if you guys go out tomorrow, you drive around, see five vehicles that should be ticketed or talked to, you know, you can send me a text, and I'll go talk to those people.
But remember, if you get one, you guys take them off. You guys have to go there, everybody.
That's what we're trying to do. Okay? Anything else, guys? On that, if not, will you guys have a chance to look at the bills from this month?
Okay, my thing that I want you to see, on the very top, you'll see for the Seward, the Southwest users, there's an $8,000 bill there. That is three months of a bill. What happened is, I sent our check in for the overages. So when they went to go take, they hadn't put it in, theirs in the computer yet.